Countdown. I think it looks like seven, right?
I have that it's still six.
Yes, all right, Apple does too, so go with Apple. Mr. Apple's always right.
Okay.
Oh, changed. Okay, welcome everyone to our town council meeting. We'll call it to order and please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Here. 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 Yeah. Here. Here. Online. On Zoom. It's here. Okay, thank you. Next is our audience of citizens. Anyone who wishes to adjust the council now would be the time. Let's see, we have a signup sheet with names on the signup sheet. So who signed up first here? Together? Okay, well, let's, okay, Lorraine. All right, Spiny, let's go. Yeah, you're on. All right, we help her out. It's all good.
Oh, hello.
How are you?
This is Lorraine Stubb. We volunteer with the Berlin Historical Society. As you know, this year Kensington is marking 300 years of having been granted permission to change its name from the Great Swamp Parish of Farmington to Kensington in 1722. To celebrate this, the society would like to work with the town to create and hang banners on some of the attractive black lampposts around Kensington Village. These banners would be two feet by three feet, double sided, and would depict historic images of Kensington. Banners would be made in town by vital signs and would cost $110 each. We are hoping to make nine banners costing under $1,000 total. Steve Wood from Parks and Grounds is ordering more banner brackets and his crew would hang the banners. I think these attractive and educational banners would create interest, conversation, and pride in Berlin history. We hope the brackets could be used in the future to announce other town events like the farmer's market, a big picnic, the Berlin Fair, and the tree lighting ceremony. And I have ideas that I can show you for the banners and where we would like to attach them. This is what the banner would kind of look like. This one of the Seven Sisters, they'll all say celebrate Kensington 300 years, 1722 to 2022. This is Seven Sisters Bridge and would go on Kensington Road.
And this is the interior of the whole Berlin train station.
Oh, nice.
That would go right next to the train station where the "Welcome to Berlin" sign is. This is the original Berlin Savings Bank. Would go right next to Webster Bank where it stands there now.
And this is the flooded train, which seems to be really popular.
And that would go near Good Claus.
Okay.
And so this is, this would Berlin brick industry.
Oh.
And this would go on one of the lampposts near the ponds at Stop and Shop.
Oh. Yeah, great.
Yeah, you can have.
Oh, yes, the infamous cup. Yes, indeed.
Okay.
That's been in more movies than you can imagine. Always see it in the movies. Somebody always told him.
Oh, Danny Reagan always is holding.
Right, oh yeah, right, that's right. Yeah, he is, right, yeah, he is.
Do you want me to leave these with you or they're gonna look much better? There'll be a light blue back.
Want to leave them? So we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
I think we pretty much settled on these pictures, but we're still debating.
Yeah, some great, great pictures.
We're also gonna do the Yankee Pedler.
Oh, good, okay.
What's the timeframe you're looking at posting them for?
Well, Vital Signs is ready to go. So I think the spring is the actual 300th anniversary. And so this is just the name change. It wasn't when the town was incorporated.
Right, okay, right, right.
I could understand why they didn't want to be known as the Great Swamp Parish.
Yeah, not really the most attractive name, no. We could use, we could celebrate that some other day when we get flooded somewhere, maybe, I don't know. Yeah, that's great. I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Once the brackets are up, they can be used to announce so many things.
That's good.
It starts a conversation.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people don't know where we came from.
That's for sure.
How did we wind up with Kensington? How did we wind up with Rivington? Now that whole thing lives.
Yeah. So are you, are you planning other events this year?
Well, we have a lot of programs that we're hoping to do.
Okay.
But nothing to celebrate Kensington's name change.
Okay. Well, good.
I think we had talked about trying to get economic development and a lot of other people involved and doing a block party or something.
Yeah.
But I don't know, that requires a lot of.
Well, you know, we've been talking to, right, the Kensington business, what, I forget what they're called now officially, the business, the owners there and the businesses in Kensington there about doing events this summer, so this might, you know, this might work out. Because they did want to do, you know, kind of bring back, we talked about the Yankee Pedler days back in, what was that, seventies, probably late seventies? Jack remembers it, I'm sure he was. Yeah, I'm sure.
Some of my fondest memories.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he remembers it, but, so.
He was DNA in his seventies.
That was DNA.
If even that, back that far, I don't know, but whatever, so, yeah, so they were talking about doing some events in Kensington Center, so maybe we can, that'd be great, so these would be up, you know, and whatever events they, so yeah, we can, we can figure it out as the year goes, right?
If they ever get the attractive lampposts in other parts of town, we'd love to do that for the bridge. There's so much here in the heart of Willard.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, there's, there's all great stuff. Wow, that's great pictures. Yeah, these are great. There's the old, the old bridge there, there we go. Of course, the new bridge flooded too recently, remember? So I guess some things never change in 300 years, right? So, yeah, that's wonderful. So we'll get, so.
Excellent, right?
I don't remember this color.
All right.
I'm like a movie back then. What? For the next meeting?
Yes.
Have an agenda item for your consideration to actually allocate $1,000 for this?
Yes.
And Vital Signs is noted, ready to go with it.
Good.
We'll get a PO out from the town and
Yeah.
Steve and his group will just do it as soon as it's ready, so.
Good. Sounds good, right? We all good? Everybody's good, I'm sure with this, yeah?
Want to make sure you have any questions for them?
Yeah.
Answered now. I think it's a great way to celebrate Kensington.
Should be fun. Yeah, we'll do it. We'll get, we'll get it appropriated next meeting and get it going. Good. Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there's just a sheet there. Oh, look at that, it flew like an airplane, get that. You didn't even have to fold it. Okay, anyone else? Still the audience of citizens, anyone else in the audience or on Zoom that wishes to speak to us?
I just want to make a comment if I can.
Yeah, Don, of course.
That's okay. I'm a stepchild today. Sorry.
They didn't let you, they didn't let you out of Hartford?
We're still in Hartford. We're gonna be here late, probably. The ladies of the Historical Society, Lorraine, and I just, I just want to say you guys do a wonderful job. You really give back to our community immensely. And without people like you doing what you've done, we wouldn't have the history and the culture and the preservation of our community that we have today. So I, kudos out to the entire Historical Society. And I've been fortunate to be a member for many years now. Very, very happy that you're doing something. Thank you. Did you get that or no?
Yeah, we got it.
We got it.
Sorry, I'm not sure if you're on. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Anyone else on the Zoom that wants to speak at this point? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the audience of citizens. Onto the, the mayor's update on just a few things that, one of the most important things I think we need, remember we talked about the election, the United Election, the signs for the budget referendum? Did we ever make some? Could we make them quickly? Maybe Vital Signs could do some four by fours and just stick them in a few significant places with, you know, vote, April 26, budget referendum, I mean, pretty, pretty simple.
We talked about the election, but not this one, but.
Yeah.
Do that.
Yeah, I, I, I think just, it's hard, you know, it's hard to get the word out for the referendum. So if we could get those, maybe, I would think four by fours should be able to make those fairly quickly, right? Simple. By what, maybe Friday? Can we put them up by, what's the Tuesday is the election or?
Right.
Or sooner, or not the election, the referendum?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll ask if they can get it done by Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, just, you know, and a couple, maybe by, right, Porter's Pass there and find some of the hotspots that everyone's driving by, just so they remember. All right, that'd be great. Thanks. I know we, we talked about it and we sort of forgot about it, but I don't know where the time goes, right? All of a sudden, it's time for the referendum, so it's. The other thing is this, I think this, so our chart for taxes, right, we're gonna still put this in with the tax bill?
So.
The pie chart.
Sal had sent a note.
Yes, this is.
And I, this is the one. Asking, we can do it, it costs about 1,900 bucks to put it in the file.
Yeah.
That's the council.
I think it's important to do it. I think it really shows where the money goes and how it's funded. Does that make sense to everybody? Yeah.
Last time, so probably.
We good? Should we vote?
Good.
Or not? Do we need to vote on it?
No, I mean, it's, you know.
All right, yeah, I think it's important to get, get in the tax bill so people see that information. I want, I want to just remind everybody, so the Gold Star Memorial Dedication is Saturday at 1:00 PM. That's, Charlie's worked on it, Donna's worked on it, we had the, when it first started, we had a ceremony, this is the dedication of it, it is up, it looks great. And so we'll have, there's a ceremony from the Woody Williams Foundation, and according to this flyer anyway, Woody Williams himself, the Medal of Honor recipient from Iwo Jima will be there. He's well into his nineties, this is, but he still, I guess, goes to many of these events, so we hope he can make it Saturday. And he's the one who started this, he's, I think, the last living Medal of Honor winner, I believe, from World War II. So that'd be great, you know, just putting that out there so people are aware of it. Economic development, I think we got, I think we might have all got this, just, you know, just touch, touch on it, we have a lot of things going on. Business growth is unbelievable with Murphy Road recycling now underway, National Sign completed a building, complete sheet metal, Budnei Aerospace is constructing their 5,000 square foot building. We got the Steel Center going, I think that building is nearing completion, right? I believe in the summer, we're talking about perhaps occupancy in June. Like 16 apartments, 7,000 square feet of retail restaurant space is coming, Turnpike Ridge, that second retail building is, is up across from Home Depot there. Newport Center and Depot Crossing, right, the Tyvek's Building is 100% occupied. We have the apartments starting on Demming Ridge, right road over there by Eversource, ADA Apartments underway. And some other restaurants have opened, right, Lou and Mo's Cornerstone, Vito's to Go, got a couple others coming up, so what do we have? What was it, 40, what is that? September 2020 to present, we have had 43 ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking, so Berlin's booming, it's great to see. Even in, you know, some tough economic times, we're, we're doing well and support all the businesses that have opened and, you know, I think we'll, we'll keep things going. I know we're gonna touch upon it later in our executive session, but, right, we did win the lawsuit with Rio Vista with Pistol Creek. Jeff, maybe you have just one 10 second or 20 seconds on the highlights, probably say it better than I can, but. And then we'll, I know we have our executive session about some other, just some cleaning.
So the town had two pieces of litigation filed against it. One was an appeal against the Planning and Zoning Commission by Rio Vista Associates. That appeal was from the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of various applications that were filed by Rio Vista with respect to property that was the subject of litigation that settled in 2008. And the town prevailed, the judge issued a decision last Monday in favor of the town dismissing the appeal. The other litigation was a declaratory judgment action brought by Rio Vista Associates against the town seeking to have the restrictive covenant in the settlement agreement declared invalid. The town filed a motion for summary judgment on that claim, and that was granted as well.
That's great. Yeah, appreciate that. Yourself and Jennifer and Chuck, who we hired as our expert, he did a good job and we're happy about that. That's, that's, that's wonderful. And then finally, we, we can talk about it in our, maybe commissioner comments, but I, I would like to, I know we're running late now for our charter revision. This guy, Kate's got, I know Kate's got a, no, Kate, so I need to be happy to hear that. So we can discuss it a little bit later in the meeting and see if it's a possibility, if we formed it at the next meeting. I know we, sorry, ran a little bit late to get it going, but, you know, seems like both sides here on the council, right? Peter, you guys are minority parties interested, we're interested, and just not a whole lot of things changing, but a few things, if we could open it up, if we could do it, maybe we try, if we don't make it, we don't make it, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk to poor Kate and she'll, she'll maybe straighten us out, but.
Oxygen.
We'll try, we'll, we'll try our best, so we'll talk about it later. Yes. Well, we'll try to keep you calm tonight and, and not go crazy, but we'll, we'll see, we'll talk about it a little later, so. That ends my few updated items, and we could go on to our meeting agenda, starting with our consent agenda. And what do we have here? We have eight topics. Approved the request of Berlin Lions Agricultural Fair to waive building permit fees for replacing the siding of their building. Accept donations for Berlin Animal Control Donation Account for $55 for pet food. Accept monetary donations totaling $320 for the Peck, Berlin Peck Memorial Library and deposit 320 into the library agency account to acquire some books, which is always great. Approved Everett Tubbs Rock and Roll Ice Cream Chuck to serve ice cream snacks and beverages at the following parks and playgrounds during, like during the summer. Our acceptance of the donation to the fishing derbies and the amount of $200 for the Berlin parking rec. We held on Saturday, April 23rd, and some Saturday, April 30th. Approved the Alex Jocelyn and JNS Soccer Camp to charge a registration fee for two separate JNSU soccer camps taking place this summer at several dates. Sage approved the request by St. Paul School to have field usage fees not to exceed an amount of $960 away for the school soccer team practices, a personal soccer field and Willard Soccer Field for a number of dates in April, May, and June, and approve a six-foot mahogany bench rated $250 with a nine-by-three plaque to be placed at Paper Goods, Pione memory of Sandra Thompson Lund. Those are our eight topics on our consent agenda. If you have any, any questions on that, on any of those? Not, we know we've all read them beforehand, we can go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the eight items on the consent agenda tonight.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. No more comments and questions. We'll go ahead and take a vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion, motion carries. All right, now on to our public hearing. So we have our here, I hereby convene the public hearing for the $2,800 water line replacement on the Berlin Turnpike appropriation and bond ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. So is there a motion to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting?
So move.
All right, second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion passes. It is the ordinance appropriating 2.8 million for the water line replacement. That's on the Berlin Turnpike authorizing the issuance of the 2.8 million dollar bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purposes. So since it is a public hearing, anybody from the public that wishes to speak now would be the time. Don't is anybody clamoring to speak to us? I mean, obviously, it's a very important infrastructure improvement. So one that we need to fix so we can keep our development going on the turnpike. So if there's no comments from the public, we, we will have a chance to talk about it in a few minutes, be next up on our new business. So I will call the public hearing on the 2.8 million dollar water line replacement on the Berlin Turnpike ordinance closed. Thank you, everyone. On to new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back on the first item on the agenda is the action that's needed is to move the wave the Rule 7 and adopt the ordinance that you just discussed, appropriating 2.8 million dollars for the water line replacement on the Berlin Turnpike and authorizing the issue of 2.8 million dollars in bonds, the town to meet the appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, making of temporary borrowing such purposes.
Mr. Ray.
Just to remind everybody, the rationale for doing this project.
Yes, yes.
If you saw this last time, we did have a bid opening this afternoon, which was rather good, actually, in some ways. The bid range, bid ranges from 1.3 roughly to 1.8 million. So the low bidder, we're looking at some of the details in the low bidder, just to make sure that we're capturing everything, because one of the biggest things was the pipeline, the ductal iron pipe, it's gonna be 25 weeks in terms of the order, we're evaluating that, so. 2.8 looks like at this point in time relatively a good number to hold to at this point in time, anyway.
Okay, good, that's great. And when, so when will we start this?
We, do they help department's approval? I'm hoping within the next month.
Oh.
I'm not sure in terms of timing, we have to time this with the material, and this is one of the other issues where we're hoping to try to, it may be later in the, in the summer, actually, before we get the material on hand.
Gotcha.
But we're talking about the directional drilling portion of it. Apparently, the HDPE pipe, the high density polyethylene pipe, is more available than the ductal iron pipe. That's going on to the Medabasset, that'll be a directional drilling process. Basically, that may occur earlier, that we're talking about scheduling that earlier, so then making the ductal iron connections later on, so. Have that started this year, by summer.
Okay, great. Any questions for Ray? I know we, I think we've talked about this before, so it's not new to us. Okay, so if we're all good, have a motion?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to waive Rule 7 and adopt an ordinance appropriating 2.8 million dollars for water line replacement on the Berlin Turnpike and authorizing the issuance of 2.8 million dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose be adopted.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. And item number two is a request to waive the bidding process for GPRS LLC Scrum penetrating radar systems to perform additional testing to pinpoint specific service leaks to water distribution system.
We originally had a New York leak detection, which became GPRS. They originally did our leak detection program several years ago, and then this past February, we were able to pick up one of the biggest ones we had, and I, I don't have a good clear picture of this. The cell in the field was doing me a favor by not showing the water spurt now. It was a large leak here, it was about 20,000 gallons per day. That was been fixed. Now we have three others that were identified, but they, they have to come back with the acoustics to identify them more clearly, because we don't want to be digging up anybody's service connections and anything. Our original, original proposal was 9,900, it's gonna require almost another $2,000 for them to come back and give us a more detailed analysis of the three other leaks. Now, this is very cost effective, I, I sold on this because I, I, we did it a couple years ago, these leaks were not detected years ago, so they're brand new. So it makes sense to me to do this every two years, and with the savings that we have in the water, that's gonna be not lost, almost $81,000 per year, so.
Wow.
Definitely is worthwhile.
That's for sure. Wow.
So I just wanted to say it went above the $10,000 threshold.
Got you. Any questions for Ray? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the bidding requirements for GPRS LLC to allow for additional leak detection work for an amount not to exceed $2,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
You second on that?
Okay.
You have any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, vote on the motion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Ray.
Good morning.
Thank you, Ray. Ray, you can't leave.
The sun's still up.
That's great, that is great.
Then the item number three is a I Marshall Mutual Aid Agreement with Carmel Fire District. And Steve Wasner, who's on vacation, see him, is joining us, so I'm gonna let him give a quick, a second soundbite on it. And the agreement was also reviewed by Corporation Council. Steve?
Hi, good evening, everybody. This, this agreement is your typical mutual, mutual aid agreement between the two fire districts, actually Cromwell Fire District in my office, just to allow for coverage in case if one of us are not available on the weekends or at nights, and also vice versa with the Cromwell Fire District. I don't know if there's any questions regarding that, but it, but it will allow us to have additional services available and share some services.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Probably all see the benefit to this, I assume. That in case we need some help, either Cromwell needs help from us or vice versa, that'd be great for both districts. Questions for Steve? Comments? Go ahead, yeah.
Steve, will they be covered on their workman's comp and retirement? Not retirement, but they get paid for attending, so this isn't, wouldn't be covered? No?
Actually, they'll be covered on the workers' comp under their own department.
But they wouldn't get paid as they would in town?
No, 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 we, we're not compensating the, the, the fire marshals or the inspectors, they'll be paid by their own district.
Is this mostly in the East Berlin area?
No, we've covered the entire town. The fire marshals in Berlin, there's two of us. In Cromwell, there's actually only one full time now and maybe two part times. This is just for coverage after hours, case if one of us are not available, our dispatch center could call up Cromwell, and they would send an investigator out to a scene.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. Any other questions for Steve? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to allow the town manager to enter into a fire marshal mutual agree, aid agreement with the Cromwell Fire District.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Steve, enjoy the rest of your.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Tomorrow.
Have a good night. Have a good night.
Then item number four pertains to the Timberland Golf Club, Atlantic Golf and Turf Bid Waiver. Jerry?
Mr. Mayor, counselors.
Hey, Jerry, how are you?
Good. I'm looking for a bid waiver for two vendors that we use, one of them being Turf Products Corporation, the one being Atlantic Golf and Turf. Due to inflation and supply chain issues, we found ourselves having to spend more money with both vendors. Especially with Atlantic Golf and Turf, we normally do exceed the $10,000 threshold with turf products, being that our fleet is mostly Toro. So that's not unusual. So I'm looking for a bid waiver for, for turf products not to exceed the amount of 19,000 and Atlantic Golf and Turf not to exceed the amount of $16,000.
Just to clarify, he's jumping into both items.
See that?
So we'll take the first one, which is Atlantic Golf.
Okay.
Atlantic. To exceed 16.
Yep. In the interest of, you know, efficiency, yeah, and time, yeah, that's good, that's alright.
Those pictures brought back a lot of memories.
Okay, any questions for Jerry?
No.
Not? Do, and take a motion.
Okay, I move to waive the town's bidding procedure for Atlantic Golf and Turf for specific chemicals, seed and equipment parts. And an amount not to exceed $16,000, because this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Are we none, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Alright, motion carries. Number five.
Number five is the Turf Products Corporation Bid Waiver, same reason that Jerry just mentioned.
Okay, go ahead and take a motion on this one.
Okay, I move to waive the town's bidding procedure for Turf Products Corporation, as they are the sole source provider for Toro parts and service. An amount not to exceed $19,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Alright, thank you, second?
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Are we none, alls in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed? Alright, motion carries.
Thank you, Jerry.
See, Jerry, thanks, have a good night.
Thank you, Jerry.
Number six.
Number six is the update on branding awareness campaign for the town of Berlin, which has been doing some good work behind the scenes.
Right? Ah, oh, there they are.
Back.
Hello.
Thanks.
Where'd I go?
Council members, Chris Hedge.
Hey, Chris.
You can click. Last budget season, this body and board of finance were good enough to provide marketing monies for economic development for the town of Berlin. We have been thinking about it for a while and realized that with everything going right now. You have to do this. There's nothing more to say than that. There's so much going on right now with the new businesses, moving earth, construction. A couple of things here, you can see provision state cornerstone truck bar, there's a lot going on in town, we need to let people know about it. People that are from Berlin or know about Berlin know the great things that are here from, it's a great place to live, work, have your business. Do things, trails, golf courses, food and drink, and a great place to raise your family. We need to help spread that word, people outside. What it is and what we're gonna do with it, this is the branding, it is, it's all in Berlin, home to community and opportunity. And essentially what this is going to be is this is going to be a way for us to bring things, us all together in one direction. Right now, that again, the town website is terrific for a lot of reasons, but we're looking to bring people here to do. Live, play, spend money, et cetera, you can click. Why not just continue just to use our town website? As I said, the town website is great, but with a lot going on, we need to think more about. Economic development and tourism. I think many people think about Berlin, they think tourism, three wonderful days in September. When you, they're at the fair or don't want to go anywhere near the fair. Think now is the time that there's a lot more going on and we need to let people know about that. Long-term goal is a website, it's allinberlin.com, this happens to be the town of Guilford's website. This is the model that I'd like to use, man, it looked the same, the concept of you about what we're looking at. So essentially, you'd be able to click in. And to find different things happening in town. Many of these things are already on the town website or in other places, so the good thing is, we're not gonna have to recreate. We're just gonna be providing links to these different areas, and again, ours will be somewhat different. I think something that we can definitely promote is our. Public amenities such as Sage Park. I know that we rent out Sage Park, get some money from it and other places, we get to let people know. First way to get this going is social media, Instagram is really what everyone is using at this point. At present, an example would be me, when I remember, I will take a picture of something and put it up online, the best example would be provision state coffee. We have a nice design on top of it, you do hashtag provision state coffee, there currently is no Berlin centric. Like weha or something like that for other towns, so it is sent out and it doesn't go anywhere. It's all in Berlin, will help to have all the good news goes to one place in Berlin, and that could be. We just want a sporting event, could be a purchase, could be any number of things that are happening in Berlin. Really, all it is, is people that are having good experiences want to share those experiences with pictures and occasionally with video. That is kind of the way of the world right now. You can click. Next step would be Facebook, it's all in Berlin, and it'd be a place where we can share good news, same thing they just mentioned. As well as events, I know that the Italian clubs, a lot of events, the truck bar is starting to do events. Golf course is now doing different events, including on the 28th, they're doing a networking and earned a golf event, so this would be a central place to take a look at that. And we'd have to work on making sure it is monitored to make sure that it is what we want at this point, but really gives us. The content out there that's important to residents, and yes, there will be some things we want to put out there that are town related, whether it's closings or plowing or other things. This will give us a central location to do that. How what? Essentially partnering with both local and regional media outlets to get out the word, this would both be electronic and hard copy. As we know, we have a portion of the population that is very devoted to the Berlin citizens, so we don't want to leave them behind. I think it's also very important to look at, I would say, what is our target market, which is younger people to live in the apartments, come to the restaurants, the brewery. But also remind people who have been here their entire lives of the great things that are here they may have forgotten about. I think if you look at a number of the new businesses, I know I've been talking to Tracy from Dragonfly Design, Farmington Avenue. She's one of four home decor stores on Farmington Avenue, she's getting a lot more people, and she can see it from credit card receipts from. Farmington, Avon, Simsberry, West Hartford. Those people are coming in for a reason, and it's to keep spreading that message out through that way. What now? Branding and launch, I had done this with the branding with the, the Record Journal, who is the parent company, the Berlin Citizen. So we'll begin some work with them on branding. Essentially, what I'm gonna be doing is to connect with people and hire people to assist me. Sort of meet, social media expert, video expert and a website creator. I think the videos are very, very important. One, people's attention span has shrunk, as we all know, people want those 30 second blips on. Whatever it is, a great experience or two, we can talk to people that are new businesses that have come to town. If you've talked to the mayor or Pete or Roche or others. We're hearing more and more from people that their experiences in town hall have been wonderful. I think a handful of years ago, we didn't really hear that that much. Just great, and then again, we can also get people that have been here for a while to tell basically why they're in Berlin. The fun part that always comes up, we pay for this. News is, last year. I was given, or economic development was given, a good sized budget, we're gonna be using those monies to help get the website started, launch the campaign, including social media. And hoping the budget passes, 2022, 23 budget, $30,000 is a question for marketing for promotion for economic development. Not all of that will be used for this, but some of it will. If more is needed, we'll come back, but the good news is, we do have funding in place right now and funding that'll be coming July 1. To help with this effort. So tonight was really just to let you know what's happening. I put this out to a couple of people and a couple of businesses, including Truck Bar, Coles Road Brewing, a couple others are already using it. On a regular basis, so it's been up probably about seven days and I think I have 81 followers.
Wow.
So the good news is, it's with a concerted effort and really getting. I don't know what I don't know, is the best way to put it, but so, I need someone to help me understand how it all works together, how to do it. And to make sure that when we're putting it out there, that people realize, because it, it's important. I think it's important to know the fact that we've kept the tax rates low. I think it's important to let people know. That there's over $80 million in investment in people moving earth in Berlin in the next 24 months. This body has put a lot of money into the community over the years for bonding and other things, and the private sector is following it with their own money. I think it's great stories that we should be telling, let people know.
Great, sounds great, Chris. Appreciate you taking the project on. Something I think is needed, though, it is always hard to get the information out to people about all the positives. Berlin, you know, the negatives seem to come out on their own, we know that, it gets out there somehow, the positives are always more difficult to. Filter out there, but yeah, it sounds great.
The, the nice thing too is I would say of the, I think, 40 or 45 ribbon cuttings or groundbreakings we've done since COVID started, I want to say 27, either 25 or 27. Women owned businesses, mostly entrepreneurs, can run social media circles around all of us. I think they need this, I think they want this from the conversations I've had, because in my mind, this can kind of be a banner. We can all march behind, because everybody. You would not be up here if you weren't amazingly proud of your hometown. Businesses are the same way, we've just never given them an opportunity to show it, and I'm hoping this will be a way to do that. Again, it may be, somebody got their hair done in four different colors, but if they're proud of it and it says it's all in Berlin. Amen.
That's great. Yeah, it's amazing, I'm always amazed by the businesses that opened during COVID, I mean. Oof, hats off to them, kudos to them, and they're, you know, all knock on wood seem to be doing great, so as things get hopefully a little bit better.
I think, I think Joey B's grew dramatically.
Oh, yeah.
Media, excuse me, during COVID because of social media.
Yeah, they're busy.
If you just look at the bottom floor of, again, the former Tyvek building on Newport Center, every one of those businesses is very, very active, they love it.
Yeah.
They want to get out there because they realize that that's how they spread the message and get more customers to come in.
Right, and I'm also noticing a lot of businesses partnering with one another as well. So for example, I go to provision state and they have different art displays. Whether that's with high school students, I know we have a lot of high school art that's displayed throughout town, whether that's through local. Artisans and photographers, but I, I think, Chris, I, I think you really hit the nail on the head when you said awareness is. Really the, the focal point of this campaign. I know when, you know, speaking, you know, from my own experience, you know, oftentimes for people my age, our first point of contact. With any town is what we see online, and so if you can have all of this information concentrated in one place. So that people know where to look when they think to themselves, hey, you know, this. Town Berlin seems pretty great, let me learn a little bit more about it. You know, presenting that information in a visually appealing way, you know, I'm just taking a look at this branding. In the, would this be the logo that you think the initiative would, would utilize?
We, we have a couple of different designs on it, we're not sure exactly yet, but, but essentially the, the same idea there where really you would bring in, I mean, the only other piece, I think it's not on that one. Is I, I wanted the, the little state of Connecticut with the red star right in the middle showing us in the geographic center. The only piece I think it's missing in that one, but yes, really just trying to push the message that there's so many things for you in Berlin. And I think you're right, and that's why I'm not calling this marketing and promotion, because it literally is branding and awareness.
Sure.
Because that's truly what as a community I think we need at this point, and if you look at the best example is so. Priority Electric, they're building a building right next to Tyler Equipment. Two prior boys, I believe, I don't know if they were born in Berlin, but they've been here a very long time, their business has been in Britain, they're building a new building in Berlin. It's a trend I'm seeing, people looking at Berlin again, they want to bring their business here, especially people that live here, to me, it tells you we're doing something right. Like to keep it going.
I, I do want to say too, that a lot of this wouldn't come about without your tireless work and, and the, the work that you guys have done to, to make us. A very attractive place, and I really want to thank you very much for, for all the things that you do and continue to do, this, the forethought like this in a program is. Does nothing but make us look better, I'm glad that you're helping us out with that.
I, I, I love what I do and I will throw out the option if anybody's interested, I am doing windshield tours of Berlin, takes about 45 minutes, we get a chance to zoom around. You get to see a little bit of everything going on, it, it's nice because a lot of it's missing that you die, and we don't even see all of it. But you see enough of the town, you see what's going on, realize that little by little, we're changing the face of this community. And it's because of the leadership here and the fact that there's a willingness to be creative. And I think that's really what it's been, and I, I give you guys a lot of credit because I can't fathom trying to balance and make a budget that big work. But I think that there's 20,000 people that are here that love it, and we just need to help tell those stories.
If I may, Chris, just speaking from, I was lucky enough to go on a windshield tour with you probably a couple of months ago and. I, I still think about that experience in terms of just learning things about Berlin that. You know, even I wasn't aware of in terms of, there is a certain rhyme and reason to the way the town works and seeing. From a different perspective, how the town is laid out and how it's organized, and we have such a great diversity of businesses too. And I think that's the part of it that really stuck out to me and still continues to sit with me, that we have these great women owned entrepreneurial. Stores, we have great pockets of industry, we have these wonderful facilities that are built around the train tracks that. So utilize them extremely well, and so. Seeing the diversity of, of business in Berlin was really encouraging and there's a lot of reason to be optimistic about where we're headed. So, again, yeah, just to, just to reiterate my explain, thanks for all your hard work and. It's a long process, but there's certainly a lot of worthwhile aspects to it.
I, I, I love what I do and that's, it, it helps a lot. It's a great community and great people and it's, it's fun to be able to help people get their dreams to reality, which is really what those ribbon cuttings are about. It's not about us, it's about celebrating them and that leap of faith that it took.
Yeah, it's been great, Chris, and it's also great to hear that, you know, as much as we. Of course, want to bring Berlin people to Berlin businesses, it's great to see out of town folks coming into town. Because that will really help support our businesses and of course, you know, we have a lot of out of town people coming in every day with our manufacturing, you know. And in our industry now, we have a lot of, a lot of jobs created, I think what, last few years we created what, over 700 jobs, I think, in Berlin with the expansions of the buried businesses. So that's important too, obviously, they're here most of the day, they're here for lunch hour, they're here buying gas, maybe groceries and, you know. So they're frequenting a lot of, a lot of the businesses too, so.
I would love for, it's all in Berlin to be part of the HR packet that people give out to new employees or prospective employees.
Yeah.
Especially with the housing coming online, I think that.
Yeah, that too, oh yeah, yeah, it's growing, good.
Opportunity, I mean, if you look just down the hill, you could literally live down the hill from ever source and walk to work at ever source.
How convenient is that, that four bucks a gallon of gas, right? Yeah, it's pay raise right there.
All goes well with CHFA financing, we get credit for all eighty gate, that would be.
There we go, that, another, another plus.
Carry on top of the sundae.
That's exactly right. So yeah, thank you for the, the thought here, it's a great campaign and.
Well, so I love your enthusiasm, you know, I, I just, when I took your map here around your bullseye, I drew a heart, I was thinking heart of Connecticut, heartbeat of Connecticut. You said geographical center of Connecticut and I, and I, I think that, that used to be true. I thought there was a marker somewhere out in East Berlin on Savage Hill Road.
Well.
That, I don't know if that's true, it was always told that story. So we can look at.
Looking.
I, I, I think, I think, I thought Bob Sisti sent some coordinates, the GPS coordinates where it was, to be honest, they after we had that talk somewhere else? No? We've, we've gotta, we've gotta find that, because that's gotta be part of this, we've gotta find that, or I guess we'll. We'll, we'll create a marker and put it in the center of Connecticut if we can find the coordinates.
Distinction too.
Yeah.
Gotta get it right because Rocky Hills claimed it.
Oh, no, they haven't, oh, wow.
It was one of the two.
That's nonsense.
I'm for a challenge.
I think, oh, yeah, yeah, let me, let me call. I think, oh, yeah, yeah. Let me, let me call uh the mayor over there, Lisa Teller. No, stop it. Stop with the nonsense. It's always been Berlin. That's not right. Um, hmm, that's interesting. Are they claiming it? Really?
Can we sue them, Jeff?
I know a guy.
I will challenge Ray Carpentino to a fight.
There you go, right. Yeah, right over there, yeah.
Economic Development guy.
Yes, right. Oh, yeah.
Inch or two on me, but I got more energy.
Yeah, I think.
Way more.
Yeah, that's it. Uh, yeah, we have to uh dispute that. Well, maybe we have like a tug of war between the council members. I don't know. I've seen their council. I think we could beat them. I'm just kidding, just kidding. Um, yeah, we'll have to see what we can do to uh settle settle this dispute. That's great. Anyway, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're we're all here to support you and uh. It'll go well.
Thanks, Chris.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Let's move on then.
Yes.
Item number seven is a tax. Oh, I hope I get the name right. Alan. Listen, join. Join in at how you say, Chris.
I'm not sure if any of us are gonna get it right, to tell you the truth.
Listen, John.
Yes, Alan, um, soon Junean is what I'm gonna go with. Um, he opened up the cornerstone restaurant, had done um a lot of work on it and essentially uh Economic Development Commission recommends a three-year tax abatement fifty, forty, thirty. Under our tax abatement policy.
Another great place that opened.
So how's he gonna? Is he gonna expand it or just renovate what he's got?
I I I think he's just gonna continue with what he has. Most of the renovation's been done already.
Yeah.
He um, I I think he's looking at potentially some outside seating, but that's, that's more of a health than. Planner discussion. But no, I mean, I've been there a couple of times and it always seems to be jam-packed and you'd have no idea. It used to be a little diner. Considering what he's done with it.
Yeah. Unbelievable food. Okay, that's great. Well, you know, the tax abatement program is what we, what do we do? We rent it. We change this up uh around twenty sixteen, I think. And uh we've been, it's been paying benefits ever since, so uh. Another uh good reason for a program like this. Any questions? This, not, go ahead and take a motion.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a tax abatement for Alan Sun Sun Jinin. For the renovation of seven ninety-seven Farmington Avenue of fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two. Thirty percent in year three for the town's tax abatement policy.
Second on that.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Are you none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, uh, motion carries.
Thank you. Tonight, item number eight is a tax abatement for Kevin Budney Lifetime Trust.
Yes, this is for Budney Overhaul and Aerospace down on New Park Drive. Um, they had purchased the driving range. This is the first building um on the driving range itself. Um, this is kind of a. Help with the current operation. I believe there'll be another building coming, but this is the the first on the the new site. So seeing progress and look like the building's getting pretty close to uh being, at least the outside being completed. And again, a three-year fifty, forty, thirty.
Thank you. Yeah, another great business in town. Been here for many, many years. Uh, sorry to see the um driving range go, but you know, it's great to see Budney Aerospace expanding again. Uh, which will certainly do wonders for our economy and economic development. So another uh. Another great business that expands during this time. Any other questions? Now we're gonna take a motion.
Sure, I move to approve a tax abatement for Kevin M. Budney Lifetime Trust for the construction of the. Ten thousand square foot building at one thirty-one New Park Drive of fifty percent in year one, forty percent in year two. Thirty percent in year three for the town's tax abatement policy.
Good second.
Okay.
Uh, any other comments and questions? If none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm number nine is authorization for the town manager to subordinate the town's right of first refusal. Respect to nine twenty-one Farmington Avenue.
Yes, uh, th- this is one that we have come up every couple of years. Um, really what it is, is we have the right of first refusal and essentially we're just kind of going down beneath a bank on a refinance for this. And this happens to be with the Zovich family uh who also owned the, we're glow in the abyss. So this is done in the past and really just. Question, still in the mix, but beneath the bank.
All right, thank you. Questions? Not, we won't take a motion.
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to execute the attached subordination agreements with respect to the town's right of first refusal. Purchase nine twenty-one Farmington Avenue, recorded in volume six ninety-seven, page eleven thirty-six of the Berlin Land Records. Subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
Second on that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You all have a great night.
All right, thank you, Chris. See you soon.
The next uh, you would end items are Mike Show, Michael Show. And now the number ten is a award bid reconstruction of town roadways.
Yes, we're getting set up uh to start paving and uh we typically, we use the uh DAS contract for paving and usually there's. Two uh vendors, Galasso and Tailcon, who are the most competitive rates. We would like to use this C A S contract once again. It's great because it gives us per ton installed. Uh, unit cost, which is, we just have their tickets and we know how much and we tell them, you know, put down two inches, three inches. Some of the highlights are, right now, the the ranges are from um as far as per ton installed, the pot mix is seventy-three to seventy-five dollars a ton. Depending on who you use and what the tonnage uh range is and curb is right now between three ninety and four fifty linear foot. Three dollars and ninety-one cents to four fifty linear foot. So these rates are really competitive and uh, I mean, that's what they're using on the uh. Unlike the DOT projects, so we get the benefit of using this contract. So this is what we'd like to do.
Okay, I I assume these costs are going up. I mean, are they are they up from last year or not that bad?
They're actually like pretty reasonable now.
Yeah.
There's an asphalt escalation factor built into the DOT contracts. So if the 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 binder, which is the oily, you know, mixed, the glue that holds it together.
Right.
Goes up, it's actually built in. So you'll see sometimes on a bill, there's an escalation factor of five bucks a ton, so we'll add that on.
Gotcha.
Right now, this is, I mean, this is cheaper than last year, which is um to me quite amazing.
Yeah, that is with every, way every other.
See if it holds, you know.
Yeah, let's hope.
So anyway, we, it's uh, it's cheaper than we would get if we probably went out to bid.
Yeah.
Because of the volumes we have, so.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, with everything else, you know, yeah, lucky, let's, shh, don't tell anybody. Okay, any questions for Mike? If not, we'll take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve utilizing the state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contract twenty-two P S X. Zero 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 eight for the purpose of reconstructing. Reconstruction paving of town roadways and other paving projects.
Second on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mike? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so move.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm number eleven is uh. To do with asphalt pavement crack sealing.
Yes, another exciting topic. Um, we checked out, actually Jim in the office checked out both the DAS. On the state um contract for this uh category as well as the CROG contract and the CROG contract actually is cheaper. We want to utilize that. It has um two contractors, it has three contractors and they're, and I have uh the bid results if anyone wants them here. I know Peter said last time, where are they? And I said, okay, uh, but I have them there for everyone if they want them. But we have two contractors, U Seal USA and Seal Coating Incorporated, who have the lowest unit rates for what we would be doing. Um, we used U Seal last year and they were very responsive. So we'd like to use the CROG contract for crack sealing and crack filling.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mike? If not, go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a unit price contract person to purchase asphalt pavement crack filling services. Use utilizing the CROG contract seven twenty-one with the most cost-effective and qualified contractor.
Second on that.
Second.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm number twelve is. The guidelines, street line painting bid award.
Right, um, similar to the last um item, we'd like to use the CROG contract for. Little yellow lines, edge lines, fog lines, parking lots, striping, um handicap symbols. There's actually. Twenty-nine, it's kind of twenty-nine different categories in their, in their contract and there's like uh in in each one, there's epoxy resin, waterborne paint. Seven different cat application types. So it's a great contract and we you, we have used both companies before. Safety marking is one of the companies that we've used last year and they're in the uh competitive range for our uh our category. So this is a a very useful contract for us to uh get all of our street lining, parking lots, um stop bars, handicapped spaces.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Mike? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a unit price contract to purchase street line painting services. Utilizing the CROG contract seven twenty-five with the most cost-effective and qualified contractor.
Second on that.
Okay.
Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll go on to the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Then item number thirteen is Glen Street Bridge replacement.
Yes, um, you may recall that you approved uh emergency repairs in December. Uh, the contractor, New England Road, um actually finished those repairs. Just got the crane out, I think, uh maybe three weeks ago. They're almost fully demobilized uh from the, from the site. Um, and this has left us in the uh, actually a good situation where we have some cushion. Because we have stabilized the bridge condition, DOT satisfaction in the short term, but long term, what do we do? And um, we were gonna do a relining of the structural, of the the structural pipe arch. Both the Army Corps and DOT um didn't like that. They wanted to a full bridge replacement. So I met with DOT um on April first at the bridge and we can, we're eligible to get into their federal local bridge program. Which gives us eighty percent reimbursement.
Right.
It will prepare the application to submit to themselves, which is sort of interesting for us at no charge.
Um, what a deal.
Yeah, and then usually we'll, we're usually paying several thousand dollars.
Yeah, right.
And then there's a new wrinkle on their um program where they'll actually, they have on-call designers. Usually we would go out. Solicit um engineers to design the bridge. We would pay the entire, um, you know, a hundred percent and get reimbursed eighty percent. If you use one of their on-call designers, they pay for the whole thing.
Wow.
So.
Great.
You, we, you know, what we're gaining in that. So I've come reluctantly to the conclusion that we have to replace the bridge. Um, I'd like to uh ask DOT, prepare the application for that program. So I'm here, um, and and essentially we were gonna do a rehab, now we're gonna do a full replacement. But money-wise, we really can't argue with the benefit to the taxpayer because we're gonna only be paying twenty percent of. It's probably gonna be between one point three and one point five million dollars.
Okay.
So um, it's gonna get up, you know, if we had to do it ourselves, serious money.
Yes, yes.
And I would come back before there's any obligation. There's no obligation at this point. And this program usually takes about three years before you actually go to bid. So it would just be the design portion upfront. So we have some time. I know the town doesn't want to bond, so I think we're. At that time, maybe we can convince Kevin to, you know, the board of finance to. To uh, on this project, project, but it's 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 a good payback for the town.
Every year we wait, that bonding amount, we pay off more, so yeah.
Yeah.
That's good.
Mike, this isn't double bridges, is it?
It's a, it's a box culvert and it's, what happened was it was wiped out, I think in nineteen eighty-seven, there was this, uh, the dam broke.
Yeah.
And it wiped out, it it actually wiped out the road next to where the culvert was.
Yeah.
So they put a box cover. That was, this was actually the highway department put that in. I have pictures. It's really, it's well done.
Yeah.
That's still solid. The structural pipe arch is original from the sixties. It would rot it out in the bottom and it was, it was restorable. But then Ida came along, sucked more fill out. DOT said, we're gonna close it, you know, unless you do something. That's where our stopgap measures have come into play. We're keeping the road open, the bridge is stabilized, but. DOT still has a load rating limit on it, so we have.
I noticed the sign said roads closed and.
Well, that was during, yeah, we we signs are up until they fully demobilize.
Okay.
But you can actually drive over.
Yep, I was over today.
Uh, most people are, you know, what's, they look down, they see the contract is not working, they'll, they'll go right through.
That changed quite a bit, though.
As far as what?
Well, the kids used to go fishing. They used to call that double bridges because it formed a pool.
Yeah.
Second.
Well, the pool was probably a scour hole, hole that DOT didn't like, so now we filled it with riprap. So if you look on both sides of the bridge, they put sheeting in at the the inlet and the outlet of the uh, the circular culvert. Essentially created a a sidewalk inside the bottom. You can walk in there right now before you were falling through the bottom.
Right.
And then put big stone riprap on the inlet and the outside to just further stabilize those conditions. So. It actually came up, a DOT caller, they're like, when are you gonna restore the load rating? I'm like, we really can't because it's not structural.
Right.
More just to stabilize, but they were happy, so. I mean, I'm happy too that they're not gonna, you know, tell me, Mike, shut the bridge down.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Remind me again, how many bridges do we have in Berlin?
At least thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
I think there's another couple that have.
Thirty-seven million of bridge replacements.
I feel like that number's gone up since the first time we've asked.
Yeah, I'm sticking to the thirty-seven. That's all I'm sure about.
Oh, let's just call it forty, what the heck at this point, right?
The other three are next to the sign in where the center of state.
Rocky Hill could have the three bridges. We'll take the center of the state. That's all right.
I just searched and it popped up as Berlin, so.
All right, well, see, there you go. So you searched, so obviously. Search engine is right, right? It's always right. You can't question the search engine, but uh, okay, any question, other questions? If not, we'll go and take a motion.
Okay, I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract agreement with New England Road, Inc. of Clinton, Connecticut. For emergency repairs to the Glen Street Bridge number zero six nine five five for the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand.
You're, you're reading off the.
It's the, it's the, yeah, it's the page one, go back.
Back?
Yeah, it's shorter one, see? That was the.
Staple together?
Yes.
Oh, that's the only one, okay.
Yeah.
I rescind that, start over. I move to authorize the town manager and staff to apply to the Connecticut Department of Transportation. For the federal local bridge program for replacing the Glen Street Bridge number zero six nine five five.
Second.
They turn the page.
Yeah, that's it. Uh, any other questions for Mike? Hearing none, but on the motion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Right, thank you. Item number fourteen is architecture contract increase for the Willard Elementary School HVAC project.
Right, um, I'm here on behalf of the Public Building Commission. Uh, right now, the mechanical um engineer has finished the design for the Willard School HVAC. Project, the Friar Architecture, Friar Architecture did the, there's an exterior chiller that's gonna be put outside the school. So Friar was brought in to do the site work. They have an enclosure around there and also they did the details for the pipe, uh, the trenches and running it into the building. And also some of the repair details inside the building, when the guys will be punching holes in walls and ceiling and all that. So Friar did all that as well. That's a hundred percent. Um, in their bid, they had um, or in their proposal, they had a line item for, it was a time materials line item for fifteen hundred dollars. To assist during the bid process. We didn't realize at the time that we wanted, uh, Public Building Commission wanted them to prepare the upfront bid package. Which is all of the AIA documents, invitation to bid, supplementary conditions and all that. So um, the PBC would like to increase their contract amount to twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, it's an increase from their existing one by two thousand eight hundred and one dollars. Um, so that they can complete the entire upfront bid package. So we're ready to go whenever this body says it. Because we're that close, very.
No, that's good.
Yeah.
That's good. Like to get that going and like to know. Exactly how much it will cost.
But, oh, yeah.
Because the prices seem to have.
Well, along those lines, PBC has also engaged cost estimation firms for both Griswold and Hubbard.
Oh, good.
So we might actually have the cost estimates back before this goes to.
Oh, great.
So the PBC, we're looking at both of those and we'll have a better idea if it's in the, you know.
Yeah.
Fifteen to twenty million or some other number lower or higher.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, because, right, the number's been all over the place.
Yeah.
Um, so it'd be good to. Confirm some of those numbers, at least even if they're pretty good estimates. So, okay, all right, great. Questions for uh Mike on this? We've been talking about this HVAC project for a while. It's good to see it moving forward. So with that, we'll go and take a motion.
Okay, move to increase the Willard School HVAC design contract with Friar Architecture of Farmington, Connecticut to twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. As this is in the best interest of the town.
Second on that.
Second.
Any other questions for Mike? Hearing none, uh, one on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, Mike.
Very much. Good night.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike.
Good night.
And item number fifteen. And item number fifteen is a conditional acceptance of land for parking for Ragged Mountain Preserve Trailhead West Lane. And I see Maureen magically appeared on the screen.
She appeared out of nowhere. It's magic.
I did.
Ron.
Hi, Maureen.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, this is a, a proposal that you've seen before. Um, as a reminder, at your March fifteenth meeting, the town council sent the eight twenty-four referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this acceptance. And it's a parcel of land north of West Lane for open space parking for Ragged Mountain Preserve, which is then adjacent to the trailhead at West Lane and Wigwan. Uh, on March seventeenth, the Pl- Planning and Zoning Commission voted to send back the favorable recommendation. I can re-summarize the project if you like. I do want to make at least one clarification on it. Um, it's a one acre parking area. It will be dedicated in the southerly section of Shuttle Meadow Country Club um, off of West Lane and is proposed in conjunction with the application that the, they have for, before P and Z right now, for a seventy-six unit planned residential development just to the east of where this parking area will be. The parking area will have its own and separate driveway from the development. Um, at the last meeting, um, we weren't sure how the parking area was going to be developed, but they, the developer has represented that they intend to gravel and, um, improve the parking area and supply pavement as required for the driveway, the driveway apron, and the handicap spaces. It'll be laid out to accommodate forty-five cars, um, with two handicap spaces and create a pedestrian trail that connects the parking area to the Ragged Mountain Trail Network and at the trailhead. Um, they intend to provide this pending the Planning and Zoning Commission approval, of course, before the construction disturbance occurs so that they can alleviate the on-street parking congestion that happens now before they start with construction disturbance to the area. So that all those cars along West Lane that might be, um, displaced with the construction will have the parking area before they start.
That's great. Thanks, Maureen. That's great to finally alleviate that. You know, we know that's a very popular, uh, place to go, and the parking is always at a premium, and the streets are crowded. It's a narrow street. That makes it dangerous. So that's great with the instead of the new development, to see some nice off-road parking for, uh, safety and, uh, a little bit better ease to get into the trail. So it's good to hear. Any questions from Maureen? No, we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion.
Okay, I move to accept transfer to the town of one point zero one acres of NBL one four ten one, north of West Lane with parking improvements for the purposes of conservation area parking as depicted on the plan entitled the Preserve at Shuttle Meadow. Sheet D four, construction details, trailhead parking prepared for the Preserve SM LLC dated December second, two thousand twenty-one, revised to March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, prepared by Harry E. Colen Sons of Plainsville, Connecticut, and subject to a clean phase one E S A. If the town opts to obtain the same name, review and approval of satisfactory transaction documents by Corporation Council and to authorize the town manager to execute such transaction documents as are necessary to effectuate the transfer.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, one on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so moved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks, Mike. Good night. Okay. Town managers report.
Very short, um, update today. Ju- just so that you know, that, um, Kevin Roy, who is our labor counsel, looking at Chippin and Goodwin, he's moving on.
Oh.
Um, and, uh, thought it's a good time to bid out services for labor relations. Uh, and with the help of Jeff and Alfred, we've created an RFP. It's out now, so we'll be looking for a new offer, more individual who can assist us with, uh, labor relations.
Oh, great.
So that's out there, and I, I need to try and have someone here by July first.
Oh, nice.
Uh, other than that, just a follow-up, um, last week we talked about the Kensington Fire Department.
Yes.
Jim Simons mentioned, um, perhaps about ten to fifteen years ago, I was not sure, we spent about twenty-five to thirty thousand the furnace replacement at Kensington, and we bought it and they installed it.
Okay, okay.
So, um, Mike, while he's, he saw all the work that he's doing, uh, he said he'll be, he'll use them to get some pricing on the parking lot to see what it would cost.
Good.
That you have an idea.
Oh, good.
So.
Okay. Figure it out from there.
Yep, and I think that's about it. Uh, just, you know, you all got a search from Ryan Benigni about the governor arriving tomorrow.
Yes.
The Berlin High School between nine fifty, eleven o'clock, so you want to be there. Would advise you to be there a little bit early. Who's the one to participate? I don't know what the plan is. Um, there'll be a presentation, uh, from the, who are in this program, has to do with the model curricula for sixth through twelfth grade personal finance and math.
Which, which I believe, um, I, I talked to Brian today a little bit. I guess the Berlin's already doing a curriculum like that, which is great. So it's just something new that the state is, is offering. It's just voluntary, but, you know, it's like a makes sense to teach young people some personal finance, which is probably the most, one of the most important things they'll take away. So, uh, yeah, he's just stopping by. I think he just wanted to make the announcement. He was looking for a nice new auditorium, which is great. Berlin has that.
We have the program.
And we have the program. So, yeah, so that seems to be the, the reason. So, which is, which is nice, you know, so. Okay.
And then that, uh, April twenty-third, Saturday, Gold Star Monument, seeing it one o'clock.
Yeah, that should be, that's exciting. The only one in the state, right?
Yep.
That's, that's impressive. Thanks to the veterans, doing such a great job with that park, right? They've done such an amazing job with that park and, you know. And Charlie and Donna helped out with free concrete and, uh, and breaking your back.
Steve Woods screwed it a lot, cleaning up after it. It looked really good.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of people kicked in, so, uh, that's, that's great. And, uh, it'll be pretty exciting. You know, I think it's great for Berlin to get that, uh, the Gold Star families. Oh, yeah, that's, that's great.
And celebrate it. I understand they're going to set up a town and have some refreshment.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, oh, good.
Come down.
Good, yeah. Good, yeah, I would expect to be a lot of visitors from around the state, so it's wonderful. I think it's the only one slated for the state, I believe.
That's it?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to take Charlie's advice. He said keep it short today.
Okay, well, good. We won't, we won't, we won't argue. We won't argue with that. Uh, okay, special committee reports, uh, I don't have, right, uh, I, I think that, uh, go ahead, what?
I was going to say, um, unless you're going to say something about the seniors in the community center.
That's what I was about to say, but go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just going to say that perhaps put it back in the, on the agenda.
Yes, we'll put it on the agenda next time. I thought it was a lot on this agenda, and I know it's a big, uh, we all have the, uh, document, and I, I would appreciate, I know Roche sent out a, an email that we just would not release any of that till we get it presented to the council and at least look at it first, and then we can, you know, we'll figure out what to do from, from here, from there. And, uh, you know, they did a lot of work on it, and still a lot of work to be done. So, uh, we'll, we'll get their report, uh, officially presented next meeting. So that'll be good. That, that's it, right? I don't think, you know, well, the housing, affordable housing committee, we got their report. It's coming, right? Is that coming next meeting? Seventeenth, the second meeting. Yeah. Okay, so that's that. Uh, council communications, uh, I'll just start off with our, um, charter revision committee. Kate, Kate, sorry, Kate, ruined your whole night. Like, it was going so well too, till now.
Are these bulletproof?
Okay, four K. I'm sorry. Yeah. Well, so I guess the way I'm looking at it is this, if we could, uh, try perhaps to, to get it done, I'll ask, you know, Pete and, uh, my already members to come up with, I, I, I don't know, uh, last time was seven people, right? Was it seven? The last one, I think it was seven. I think I could count seven. Uh, or five, it could be five, right? As little as five to seven. What do you think? Five to five. I think seven's a good number. Lucky number seven or unlucky number seven.
Yeah.
Uh, let, 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 I mean, let's maybe just go out there and see who we could, uh.
I think the smaller, the better.
Fine to, yeah, get on the committee. Maybe it is only five, but, uh, yeah, it might be.
Better, especially with time.
Well, yeah, if we could get some folks together and maybe create it on the fifth of March, of May. Um, I, I'm looking at your timeline. I know we're sort of a month behind your timeline and just, you know, that's what happened, but, uh, I guess it's a possibility that we could get it done, depending upon how.
It just depends on how many times you want to meet.
Yes.
How involved they get.
Okay.
Have that public hearing before they do a, a.
All right.
Public hearing answer they do.
Okay. I remember it last time was involved, but if we could, you know, push it forward. If for some reason we don't make it, we don't make it. It's not the end of the world. They did. Yeah, I, I don't.
A big gap.
I don't think we're really looking for, you know, I mean, there's certain things we want to talk about, and Tugan Attorney did an offerio the other day about it. You know, there's definitely some language changes in different parts of the charter that would be simple to go through, just to make things clear. And, you know, there's some ambiguities, uh, ambiguities that are in the charter, so we can try and fix some of those simple things. And, yeah, I don't, I don't believe it would be as, um, broad, uh, brush of changing things as it was last time. It was too, really, really was too much. Because I think the, the last I, there was so many things in that cleanup provision to vote on that I don't think anybody even. Right, remember, there was.
That loss, yeah.
Yeah.
So shocked by that.
Yeah.
Usually that.
That one, everybody goes. Yeah, there were so many things in there, right? There was a lot of items, too, probably too many, but. Anyway, so let, let's see what we could do. If we can get it going, even we get it started and, uh, you know, we'll you know, we'll see. If it doesn't work, and we don't get there in time, we don't, you know, revisit it, but at least we can get it started.
I would just suggest whoever you decide to put on the, maybe charter revision committee, they know that it's going to it's just a commitment for a couple of months.
Yeah, yeah, commitment for the months, right in the summer, uh, the, the, the non-COVID summer, maybe, hopefully. That's how we're at. So I don't know.
Definitely.
Maybe we.
If not now, afterwards.
What's that?
They definitely need to be committed, if not.
Committed, yeah, what, yeah. One way or the other. Yeah, I mean, if we can't make it work, we won't, but, uh, maybe we'll give it a try, right? So we'll work on that. Uh, okay, that's my comment. That's enough. Uh, what, what else you guys, what you guys got? Anything?
That's more than enough.
Yeah.
Quick one back to.
Yes.
Firehouse parking.
Yes.
Representative Beach, and I had a chance to visit the lot with the chief down there, and it needs to be done.
Okay.
And the fire department's gotten three or four quotes from contractors, and there's no real specification. They had different ideas on how it should be handled.
Okay.
Uh, we need to get input from public works. I don't think we need to hire a consultant. We have a talent on staff.
Good.
On how to treat the pavement and get, get some direction before you even look for a price.
Okay.
There's one, one contractor wanted to rip the whole thing out and haul it away. Another one to grind it up and use it in place.
Right.
I suggested adding a catch base, and I don't know if public work can do that with their own forces, so you know, we got to hash it out with public work, but I think we have enough talent on staff to get it done, right?
So can we get that started and have public work start the initial, right, review of it and see what they think and what they can possibly do? Which would save the town some funding?
And streamline it too, to go faster.
Right, yeah, thanks, Charlie, for going out there. And Donna, thanks for going out there and looking at it. And, uh, we can get that, get that moving too. Any other comments?
Really quickly.
Yes.
So earlier today, I went to the first ever Berlin High School Career and Job Fair, which was a really positive experience. Um, good turnout. I would say there was probably twenty or so businesses.
Nice.
Uh, that came and, uh, good turnout from the students, consistent flow over the course of the two hours. Um, general impressions, I'm, I'm, continue to be impressed by the focus on practical education. In Berlin High School, I was talking with some of the students, and they're taking business law classes and accounting classes, and um, there's really such a great focus on the skill-based professional type classes at Berlin High School. That's really incredible. And on top of that, it was really encouraging to see, you know, a pipeline for the student body in Berlin businesses. I think it's a mutually reinforcing relationship where you have businesses potentially bringing on Berlin students, Berlin students learning a little bit about how we do business here in town. So really great experience. Hopefully we can get a couple more in the, you know, within the next year. Um, but all in all, it was a great first crack, so that's all I got.
Now, that's interesting, Jack. So that's the first one ever they've had like that?
That's what I was told.
Can't be.
That's what I was told, yeah.
Really?
I never, I don't remember ever seeing that, no.
Uh, no, 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 I could have swore somewhere.
I can tell you, just to jump on that.
Which is great, they're doing.
Many years ago, I mean, you have the Connecticut ABC, Connecticut Associate Builders and Contractors here in Connecticut. And they used to run a job fair, and they used to call it construction rodeo, and they changed the name. And I tried for six years talking to members of the Board of Ed and the school superintendent to send kids. We're the only town in the area that didn't send any kids from high school. Kids from all over the state went there.
Hmm, yeah.
And it took six years, and finally they sent people. And then a couple of years later, COVID came, so they haven't done it in a couple of years. But you know, it was hands-on training to, to kids to be introduced to the construction world. And, you know, even the state of Connecticut sent um, people there, and the state police, uh, had a booth there. And, you know, I'm glad to see that they're looking at this, trying to get kids into other opportunities that, that exist that we're all sitting here looking for help, and we can't find any.
Oh, I, I know. That's, no, that's wonderful.
I'm kind of glad to hear you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, well, I just look at the manufacturers I've visited in Berlin in the last few years, and they're just dying for people. I know a couple of them told me, one, one of them, I went into one day, just, the guy said, you know, I could hire thirteen people right now. And I'll train them, I'll pay, you know, pay them good money, benefits, they're here for life, and I can't find thirteen people to, to, to train, and, you know, they pay very well, you know, the, especially a lot of manufacturers in Berlin, you know, their technical stuff, medical instruments, right? So it's some, you know, serious, uh, forest machine, aerospace, defense stuff. So, um, yeah, that's great. That's great. Get some kids in some different career paths that will, you know, have jobs and pay, pay well. Okay, so acceptance in minutes, April fifth. Take a motion on the.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, okay. So it is now time for our executive session. We'll go ahead and take a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayo, make a motion to go into executive session pending litigations. Connecticut Journal of Statute, section one dash two hundred six, part B, strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims or pending litigation, real vista.
All right, thank you. Second on that? And, uh, time in, we'll say eight thirty.
Give me a second.
Are we writing in? Yes, everybody, I'm sorry, the, the town manager, Corporation Council. Uh, that's it, right?
Chuck will be joining.
Oh, Chuck, oh, oh, good, okay, Chuck is, okay, yeah.
I'm calling in. I'm going to get out of this, and I'm going to dial in in one second, okay?
Okay, Donna, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, just take a moment to
clear the room.
Clear the room and, uh, get started.